We'll begin, uh, we do have a special meeting tonight, and so we'll begin with that prior to getting into our workshop discussion. And so with that, I will open up the May twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, a city council's special meeting. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Clarence Beck, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Manget.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wong.
Hello.
Councilor Barnes.
Good evening.
Councilor Friedland.
Here.
Councilor Gallegos.
Good evening.
Councilor Sampson.
Good evening.
And Councilor Tapia Vega.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Okay, um, so, uh, we just have one item to address tonight under regular business. This is item A, contract. The purchase and sale agreement for lot one A, Westridge filing number one, replat A. We have our public works director, Jeff Arthur, here to get started.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor members of council. So, um, we have a request for you to authorize a purchase and sale agreement. Um, so the parcel we're discussing was purchased by the Water Utility Enterprise in two thousand and seventeen for future use for a water treatment facility. Um, as you know, over the past year and a half or so, we hired a consultant to um, do further analysis. As part of that analysis, we determined that that site is actually about half the size of what the water utility needs for a future water treatment site. Um, but we also along the way learned that it is an adequate size and an ideal location for a um, treated water storage tank that would benefit the town of Erie. Um, it is a desirable elevation. It's high enough up that it could be largely or entirely buried, and it is um, in close proximity to their water distribution system. So, um, what you have before you tonight is a purchase and sale agreement. I will highlight some of the terms, but um, largely Erie will construct a facility. The hope is that it's entirely, or at least mostly underground again, because it is a, it's driven by elevation. It's a a high point in the area. Um, Lafayette will work in good faith to allow Erie to access a parcel that we have, or actually a series of parcels we have that extend from the site out to um, two eighty-seven so that Erie can tie this into their water distribution system. Uh, Lafayette would rezone the parcel to public prior to closing to accommodate that use on the site. Um, and then we would come back to council with an ordinance, um, authorizing the sale prior to closing. So tonight is the purchase and sale agreement, and then the actual approval of this transaction would be by ordinance at a later date. Um, the proceeds from the sale would return to the Water Utility Enterprise Fund, and we would then be able to in the future use those toward purchase of a site that is more suitable for our future water treatment plan. So with that, we have a proposed motion and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Um, any questions, comments, council? If not, I'll take a motion, please.
I move to approve the purchase and sale agreement between the city of Lafayette and the town of Erie for the sale of city-owned property legally described as lot one A, Westridge filing number one, replat A in the city of Lafayette. In substantially the same form as the copy in tonight's special meeting packet, subject to non-material changes and final approval as to form by the city attorney and authorizing the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement on behalf of the city and to extend the closing date for purposes of the party's due diligence at the city manager's discretion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any further, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That passes unanimously. Great. All right, that was our only item for our special meeting tonight. So with that, I will adjourn the special city council meeting. And we will move on, and I will open up the city council workshop for tonight. Um, tonight we have a couple items to discuss. Uh, we have the capital bond measure exploration. Um, as folks have seen, the um, the city staff have been out engaging the public, uh, on some potential bond measures. Afterwards, we'll discuss, um, board commission and committee program updates, term limits, things like that. And then finally, if there are any new ideas, um, we will, we will conclude with that. Um, so as staff gets set up, the first item on tonight's agenda is capital bond measure exploration, public engagement, and polling report. Uh, when staff is ready, uh, we can get started.
Okay, just one moment. Okay. Thank you, mayor and city council. Um, we're happy to be here this evening to talk to you a little bit about the capital bond exploration engagement and polling that we have been undertaking for about the last three months. So I'm going to be here tonight presenting with Alex Nelson and Debbie Wilmot, and then we have Ryan Winger here with Magellan Strategies to talk about polling, and we do also have some additional folks here, um, tonight. Um, we will have Maddie Perdonovich, who, and Jason Simmons with Hilltop Securities, who have been here, um, providing some financial assistance and support for the city. Um, they were running a little late with some traffic tonight, and then we have Dalton Kelly here, um, from Butler Snow, and Butler Snow is our um, newly approved at last week's council meeting, legal counsel for, um, bonding and ballot language. So, um, just depending on how things go this evening, um, and how, and if we move forward, um, these will be some resources that we have been utilizing and will need to utilize moving forward. So to start this evening, um, our agenda, we're going to do a little bit of background on discussions so far, and then we will talk a little bit about the polling results, um, the engagement activities that we've been undertaking, um, and the report out on those activities, our next steps, and then we'll have some time for discussions and questions. So by way of background, um, as you know, we had some discussions with city council, and we gave you an overview of some of the facilities' um, assessments and, um, feasibility studies that we have been conducting and looking at over the past several years. Um, we have a lot of deferred maintenance, and we have a lot of facilities' needs here at the city, and so we really needed to take a close look at prioritizing what our capital needs are moving forward. So through these discussions, we worked with you to identify three of our major capital project needs um, moving forward, and they include the Bob Elburger Recreation Center, and that would be for a renovation of part of the building and an expansion of the facility, which would include enhancing and expanding, expanding the aquatics center, um, expanding the fitness facilities, and then providing some additional community, um, spaces and amenities. The second would be a civic center, which would be a new space, um, for city hall and a civic center-focused facility that would provide a more accessible and welcoming public space. Um, it would be an inclusive community space that would include our, um, our municipal services, our staff, and, um, council chambers, and we would also be able to have our municipal court there as well. And then the third one is our service center, and that would be for our public works, uh, services, our kind of transportation and parks, and some of those operational services that we have. Um, and that, that's a kind of an upgrade of that facility to make it, um, more right-sized to better accommodate the services we have out of that facility. So those are the three projects that we've been talking about, and as I mentioned, we've um, worked with external partners to complete assessments of the facilities. Um, we've reviewed the assessments and recommendations. Um, council reviewed the cost of estimates and the potential financing tools earlier this year, and then requested that staff conduct professional polling and community engagement to understand the voters' interests. So we, um, engaged with Magellan Strategies, who's here with us this evening, um, to do a statistically valid poll so that we could find out more about how the community feels about the projects and the potential for a ballot measure. We also have been undertaking a community engagement process over the past couple of months, um, for the purpose of informing the community. We wanted them to understand what the projects are and what the need is for these projects. We did that through Lafayette Listens, through project brochures, uh, signage, project information stations at several of our public-facing facilities. Um, we also engaged through the polling, through public input meetings, board and commission meetings, um, and through a survey or questionnaire. And then tonight, we're going to report out on the polling results, the survey results, and the engagement feedback. Um, through this process, and we'll talk a little bit more about this, and, and we talked about this in the memo, if you had a chance to read the memo for tonight's, um, for tonight's, uh, the packet, um, we kind of framed these with three different guiding principles, which is investment in quality services and service delivery, um, with fiscal responsibility and sustainability and environmental stewardship. And now I'm going to kick it off to Ryan Winger. He's going to go through the polling results.
Great. Uh, thanks, Megan, and thank you all for your time tonight. Happy to be here and, uh, look forward to jumping into these results. So I just, for those who aren't familiar with how the survey was conducted, you see on the left side of the screen there, just an example of a text message that went out to registered voters within the city of Lafayette, and we completed seven hundred eighty-eight, uh, responses. So pretty strong, very strong response rate, which gives us a margin of error of about three point four three percent. Um, I will point out that as we look at kind of smaller population subgroups, they are going to have a higher margin of error, but what's most important to note is that this data is weighted to represent what we expect odd-year turnout to look like this November. And so that's why we always include a slide like this, even though that may be difficult for you to see if you don't have it right in front of you. Uh, the, the key place to look here is two thousand and twenty-three. That's the last comparable election we have to go off of, and so we had the red box there around that, and really the, the main, uh, difference in a year like an odd year compared to a midterm or presidential year, if you look, is in the age ranges, right? So when you look at a presidential year like last year, it was under, or just right at forty percent, we're over the age of fifty-five, whereas in a year, in an odd year like this year, it's going to be closer to fifty or probably over fifty percent. So that's kind of the main difference, but you see really a difference in around eight thousand voters. So it is a little bit different electorate that we're looking at for an odd year compared to an even year. And these slides will just show, again, where possible, these are weighted to reflect what we expect turnout to look like this year on things like gender, party affiliation, age range. Again, you see the largest age range there is that sixty-five plus. They're the most regular voters in an odd year. Also, you see their tenure in Lafayette. We got a pretty good spread of, of newer versus long-term residents, which is good. Uh, we also have things like race, ethnicity, rent or own your home, four-year college degree and income, and again, where possible, these are weighted to reflect what we expect turnout to look like. And finally, from a demographic standpoint, we just have, uh, these survey areas. So this is a, a map that we've used in polling, actually, for the city before, where we have the city basically divided into six areas, and we ask respondents to identify which area they live in, and so you can see, uh, from this slide, just where these interviews are coming from for the most part. And so let's get right into it. Um, obviously, later on in the survey, we're going to introduce, for those who aren't familiar, these capital projects, the funding mechanisms. Uh, but before we do that, we just have some kind of benchmark-type questions that we want to ask, just to make sure that there's no maybe underlying issues that aren't related to the ballot measures themselves. And really, on this slide, where you ask a job approval, basically, for the city in providing services and programs to residents, nearly eighty percent approve of the job the city is doing. Um, only eight percent disapprove, and thirteen percent have no opinion. So really, no concerns whatsoever here. This is a very high measurement, and, and clearly, um, the, the vast majority of respondents um, are, are very happy with the job that the city is currently doing. Next, we want to ask a little bit more specifically about how the city, uh, is handling finances, fiscal responsible, and spends taxpayer money wisely. This is a question that we ask in, in pretty much every survey that we do on behalf of any local government, and, uh, fifty-nine percent agree, only fourteen percent disagree, twenty-seven percent no opinion. I always say, I'm actually kind of glad to see twenty-seven percent no opinion. If that was a very low number, then I would imagine we're getting like a hyper-engaged, maybe not representative sample of respondents. The average person isn't necessarily sitting around thinking about these things, so that twenty-seven percent is good. Uh, but really, the fifty-nine percent is great. What we see on an average basis is more like low fifties, even high forties. So fifty-nine percent in terms of, uh, spending taxpayer money wisely, fiscal responsible, is a good place to be. This question is obviously always, um, important and interesting to know when we're talking about any kind of potential, uh, revenue increases. Do you think the city has the resources needed to provide residents with an acceptable level of services and programs? Sixty-one percent say yes, nineteen percent say no, twenty percent no opinion. So again, this seems to suggest, and it, and it makes sense given the, the first slide about the job approval. Clearly, the majority of residents say, yep, they're doing a good job, which means that they probably have the resources needed to go, do a good job, although you do have that nineteen percent that's saying, no, I, I, I think, um, you know, some, some more could be done here. And then again, just coming at it from a slightly different angle, do you think the city is headed in the right direction or if it's off on the wrong track? And again, nothing, nothing concerning here at all. Two out of three respondents agree, or believe that the city's headed in the right direction, seventeen percent wrong track, sixteen percent no opinion. So now we want to start telling the story a little bit. We're, we're providing them basically general information about the three capital projects, um, making sure they understand that no decisions have been made, and so it's important for them to, uh, participate in the survey, to provide their opinions, and then providing them the potential ballot language for both a property tax and a sales tax increase. And so the fir-, the first language they read was a property tax increase, and we asked, now that you've read the ballot language, if an election were held today, how would you vote? Fifty-three percent would vote yes, thirty-nine percent would vote no, and eight percent undecided. And so here's where I'll mention, which will be relevant for many of these slides going forward. Really, in any kind of pre-election polling, we're looking for sixty percent support. You don't just want to aim for fifty percent plus one, because there are factors that are going to kind of be out of control of, of the city, whether it's a crowded ballot, what general economic downturn, things like that, that can kind of erode support in between when a survey is conducted in November. So fifty-three is low fifties. Um, obviously, it, it is above fifty at least. We're not upside down, uh, but we would actually want to see a little bit higher numbers, um, to be incredibly confident. On the sales tax, we do get a little bit higher, right? So after they read the sales tax ballot language, it jumps to fifty-six percent, uh, thirty-four percent would vote no and reject, ten percent undecided. So slightly, uh, more, um, positive, uh, support for a sales tax increase compared to a property tax increase, but as you'll see, as we go through everything and then ask them again, they kind of come together and, and pretty much even out. Even now, we're within the margin of error. So there's not a significant difference in their minds between the property and sales tax. But as I said, the next step in the survey is going to share information about why these three projects are being considered, and then ask them to evaluate that information and indicate whether it makes them more likely to vote yes, to approve a ballot measure, more likely to vote no and oppose. And we start off with just general, two, two kind of general pieces of information, basically centered around the age of the facilities and the growth of Lafayette's population. Some folks may be familiar with some of these, you know, facts and figures where three thousand people in nineteen seventy-three compared to over thirty thousand today, uh, but a lot of respondents probably aren't super familiar with these things, and so we want to make sure to kind of set the table with, here's, here's generally, uh, what we're talking about here in terms of, hey, the short-term fixes to these older buildings can be pretty expensive, and a more responsible approach, and that first message would be modernizing the facilities instead of continuing this stopgap approach. And after reading that piece of information, three out of four respondents are more likely to vote yes and approve. Um, and I, again, on the second piece there, which is more talking about growth, along with the age of the buildings, seventy-two percent more likely to approve. So each of those pieces of information is, is fairly compelling to respondents. Now, as we get into the three projects themselves and more information, what you'll see on these slides is these are ranked in terms of how likely they are to, to resonate with respondents, and what resonates most is all the messages about the rec center, followed by the service center, followed by the civic center, which makes sense as we get into some of the slides later in the, in the presentation. That's generally how people prioritize them, so it's just kind of interesting to see what, what resonates with them, what they respond to, and just the idea of, just again, setting the table about the rec center built in nineteen ninety, and it's, has, you know, a lot of things that are failing due to the nature of a thirty-five-year-old rec center, right? And so the folks that aren't familiar, Summer twenty twenty-four had a six-month closure due to pipe failures and leaks, have some even images here, uh, explaining that lazy river is, um, you know, basically had the mechanical failure, hard, or expensive and costly to repair. Again, telling them a little bit more about why the rec center project is being considered, and eight out of ten are more likely to approve knowing this information. Followed up with, um, the proposed design, and even with some images that they're, hopefully see that this is not just aquatics. We're also talking about more workout space, fitness class space, et cetera. Seventy-eight percent are more likely to approve, and then just the simple message that many other, uh, close-by recreation centers in the area have newer or modernized facilities, whereas there's been little to no new amenities at Bob Burger Recreation Center since nineteen ninety. And again, over three out of four are more likely to approve knowing. The next, uh, thing that was most likely to resonate was this one message about the city service center, which clearly a lot of folks, uh, or at least more folks will be familiar with the rec center. Most folks are not familiar with the city service center. They've probably never been there themselves. They may or may not even know where it is. So again, important to educate them. Here's, here's how this would benefit the city. You see the bullet points there where we're enlarging areas, we're updating electrical system, we're modernizing things, we're expanding the space, uh, just to basically extend the lifespan and make it easier to store these things and easier for employees to work there, seventy-six percent more likely to approve. Now moving on to the city hall. The, the piece of information that was most likely to resonate about city hall was just the idea that it's, uh, one, not energy efficient, it's not up to date as far as safety and ADA accessibility standards. So knowing that, seventy percent are more likely to approve, that's a, a message that does resonate with, well, we'd like to have a city hall that at least meets those basic, uh, you know, functions. These three are a slightly, you know, they, they drop from, again, seventy to sixty-five percent. So again, we're still talking about over six out of ten voters who are more likely to approve knowing this. They're just not quite as powerful, um, in terms of, look, there's a lot of new services that the city provides now that weren't provided at the same level when city hall was built, and so there's this need where it's just generally cramped to provide all of these services, and we're basically outgrown the building. That's really what the second message is talking about. So despite multiple renovations and repurposing, we're just at capacity. And again, this is probably something that the average person is not familiar with. They don't spend a lot of time here in this building, and so it's good to kind of educate them and make sure they're aware, this is why this is being considered. And then also a piece about the municipal court, which would be housed in the new civic, civic center, just creating that physical separation between the court and the police department, um, seeing if that was something that would resonate with, with respondents as well, and it does, again, sixty-five percent are likely to approve. We also wanted to, again, provide some images on this one, uh, not just where the location of the new civic center may of the new civic center may be, but also rendering of it there. Again, 65% more likely to approve. So this isn't something that's necessarily turning off many respondents, although you do see it climbing a little bit here, where nearly a quarter say more likely to reject when they see these images and this message. But still, it's a net positive to talk about all of these things. Here's where the story gets a little bit more complicated. We also wanted to be transparent and say, look, from a property tax standpoint, here's how it breaks out among the three different projects. And knowing this information, how likely, or does this make you more likely to approve or reject? In this one, you'll see, actually, one in three are more likely to reject knowing this information. So when they're able to see the three different projects broken out and the tax impact for each project, probably what's going on here is that more of them are seeing, oh, well, I don't, that seems like a high number to me. Maybe we should only pick one of these three, et cetera, when you break it up like this. And then we see the same phenomenon on actually the sales tax impact as well. Well, now we're actually right below half who are more likely to approve. And in fact, 38% are more likely to reject. So this level of detail where we're explaining the impact that each of the three projects would have, this is something that just causes, you know, more of the respondents to hesitate and say, well, now that I look at the three broken up like that, I'm not quite sure, which I thought was kind of interesting. Whereas when you're just telling the story in a positive sense, it's much more likely to resonate with them. So after all of that, and again, I know that that seems like a lot, but I don't know if any of you got the survey or took the survey, you'd be surprised. Actually moved through it fairly quickly. So after learning all that, we're going to ask them again to consider the two different versions of the ballot language. And the property tax does move up by four points. So all those numbers where we're saying more likely to approve, basically what that does is practically how it works out is it moves some of the undecided folks to yes, it moves probably some of the no to undecided, to where you see a jump from 53 to 57%. So we're getting closer to that target of 60. On the sales tax, it moves by a smaller amount, only by two points, but it started higher to begin with. So it moves from 56 to 58%. And so basically, what happens is we have the uninformed, where, again, talked a little bit about that, just slight gap in favor of the sales tax, which again, is not surprising. We do a lot of this kind of work up and down the front range. And there is a lot of just general concern about property taxes. And in most surveys where we're doing this kind of comparison and asking them to evaluate property versus sales, a lot of folks will, not overwhelmingly, but just slightly prefer sales tax, and we see that here. But it pretty much goes away in this case on the informed, that basically after they have all the information, there's only a one-point difference between the property and the sales tax. So we could have ended the survey there. We wanted to do a little bit more digging in terms of how they evaluate these three projects, which is, I'm really glad we did, especially in light of how people view those tables. It's like, okay, let's dig into how are they evaluating these projects. So we wanted to say, for each of the three capital projects, please indicate whether its inclusion on the ballot makes you more likely to vote yes, more likely to vote no, or it doesn't make a difference. And you see here clearly the most popular, if we want to look at it that way, the most popular of the three is the rec center. 79% are more likely to vote yes, if with the rec center being included. And then it drops off to 64% for the service center and 58% for the civic center. So it's still really a two to one in terms of the civic center, two to one ratio between more likely to approve and more likely to reject. But at the same time, that 29% is double the number that would be more likely to reject the recreation center. And so it just kind of helps us to prioritize a little bit in terms of, here's what they're most looking forward to being included on the ballot. And then we just kind of threw a hypothetical at them and gave them potential to choose among all of the different project groupings, right? Which are you most likely to support? And so what's interesting about this is, this includes everyone, right? So this even includes the no voters. But we wanted to say, okay, 37% would vote yes, or are most likely to support all three projects together. So that's the largest group. But then if you go on down the list, the next three all include the rec center. Not surprising, given what we just saw. 17% are most likely to support the rec and the service center, 17% are most likely to support just the rec center, and 13% are more likely to support just the rec and civic center. And then it drops off, when you, when you take out the rec center, there's really only about 10% that would vote yes, if, that are most likely to vote yes, with the rec centers not included. And then you do have 7% who are saying, I'm not even going to choose one of these. I would not be likely to support any of the options. So interesting to look at it this way. Yes, the plurality would still, most likely is for all three, but it's only 37%. So clearly, there's just some more kind of thinking and thought that has to go into this. Finally, we wanted to ask about potential impact of other tax increases, right? This is kind of one of those things that's often beyond your control as a city and thinking about, okay, what else is going to be on the ballot? Is it going to be a crowded ballot? If a separate entity such as state or local government other than Lafayette were to place a major on the ballot, asking voters to approve a tax increase, so we're not differentiating between sales and property, just any tax increase, would that make you more or less likely to vote in favor of this bond major? 25% say more likely. They say, yep, this will be local. I'm still going to support this. But you do have that one in three that say less likely. But then the large group is 42%, no difference, which is encouraging to me. We ask this kind of question a lot. And where you really run into trouble is when that less likely is over 50%, where they think, okay, I'm generally on board, but if this ballot starts getting crowded, this is going to fall to the bottom of my personal priorities. So we don't see that happening here. And then with that, I'll take any questions that you all have.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening and for putting that presentation together. Questions from council regarding this portion of the presentation? Or comments? Counselor Sampson?
I wanted to say thank you, because I read some comments, and there are people that said, I wouldn't vote for the civic center because I've never even been to the current civic center, you know, in a decade or more. And I thought, well, great, we're at least reaching the people that we don't hear from. So that's always, that's always important, because we need that, we need the input from everybody.
Because they are going to vote.
They are going to vote, or they will use the services, depending on which, at some point, whether or not it's services at a park, but, you know, may not be at that facility. So I appreciate that. When you did all of this, and you're saying percentage, percentage, did you ever look at, okay, this is how many people voted in 2023? This is the breakdown of that. So how did, we know that those 65 and older vote more often. Did we ever look at that kind of ratio of how did they vote? Like if we were, if so many people in 2023 vote, how did we line that up?
Sure. Yeah. And that's why we wait the results to match what we expect turnout to look like. And actually, I did, you know, staff was curious to look at, what if we wait this to 2026? Like, does it make a difference if we anticipate a different electorate?
Right.
And really, what happens is that the sales tax becomes more popular by about one point, and the property tax more or less stays the same. There's not a lot of change when you kind of bring in those younger voters. And that makes sense, because those in a midterm like next year, those voters that basically, you know, 5,000 new voters are lower propensity, they're more likely to be younger renters, lower income. And they actually, actually, I think I said it wrong, the property tax is slightly more favored among them.
Okay.
Because they're, they feel the sales tax more acutely than older voters. So, but it really was only a point difference. It doesn't make a massive swing. So I think that kind of gets to kind of what you're, what you're asking, right?
Yes.
Is how much does the electorate really matter? And yes, they're weighted to match an odd year, but when you waited to match an even year, there's not a significant enough difference.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all this work. I'm glad, and I'm happy to see the way you've done the analysis on the data. And I have two questions. I think I ask this every time. Can you help me understand what statistically significant means? 788 respondents out of a population of 30,000?
Sure. Yeah. So really, I mean, we're looking at the margin of error, right? And so as long as it's a random sample of respondents, right? And so as long as you can be sure that the pool that are potentially going to get the survey aren't biased or not reflective of a city in some way or another, like it only went to old people, or it only went to young people, or et cetera. So as long as we have a random sample that we're working with, 788 responses gives us that margin of error of 3.4, 3.43, which you see here. So basically, what that means is that we're not saying that these numbers are going to be exact, but we would expect them to be within 3.43, plus or minus of whatever the measurement was. And so the more interviews we get, the lower that margin of error gets. If we were only, if we would have only got, you know, 300 interviews, it's going to be closer to 6% margin of error. So in terms of being statistically valid, we're just looking for a target where that margin of error is something that we're comfortable with. And when you're in the 3%, that's, that's pretty good.
Okay. Second question. Thank you. I heard, and I think it was reflected in some of the comments, that there's some uncertainty this year about economics, inflation.
Sure.
And we can't be sure about how that's going to impact people from now until that the election actually happens. Is, oh, is that, you're comfortable with the uncertainty, knowing how we typically do, look for that margin of error? We're still comfortable that this is valid?
Yeah. Oh, it's definitely valid. This, the last three months has been kind of a uniquely challenging time to poll about economic issues, right? Because any given day, you know, like depending on what's in the news, what people are feeling, you know, especially with inflation, like that kind of stuff impacts sales tax. Property tax is a little bit more set in stone, right? As long as you're not doing a survey, like as property tax assessments are going out in May, which luckily, we weren't in this case. But yeah, I mean, generally, how that plays out is, is people just either are feeling okay about the economy, they're feeling great, or they're feeling not so great. And so that's part, part of the reason for that is why we, or that's part of the reason why we do look for that 60%. Because if there is just a general, you know, economic like malaise, or people just aren't happy, or aren't feeling like voting yes on the tax increase, even when they otherwise would, or they said they would back in April, that's, that's the kind of, that's why the margin of error is important. Like, that's kind of the 3% one way or another that's going to affect, you know, these numbers. And so I'm confident in the numbers, but of, of course, that's something that is really kind of outside the control of the city. Like, you don't know how people are going to be feeling economically come November. And unfortunately, that's just kind of the, nothing you can do about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Frehley?
You mentioned the 60% number.
Yeah.
Does that change at all compared to like, just a ballot initiative that doesn't have a financial implication versus one like this that would?
Oh, yeah.
Do you kind of say like, all right, property taxes, sales tax, people are going to maybe trend towards not being, like, talk to us about the wisdom around that?
Sure. Yeah. So I mean, sometimes, like when a bond is falling off, and one of our clients will, you know, want to extend something, so you can say, actually, the ballot link will say, without raising taxes, it doesn't move around as much. If you're not raising taxes, or if there's some other kind of ballot measure that's, you know, related to boards and commissions, or something that doesn't have a tax increase built into it, then yeah, that, that kind of movement is less relevant, right? It's more kind of baked in. It's not going to change. Really, what, what impacts any kind of question about a tax increase is how people are feeling on, you know, the third or fourth week of October, when they're filling out their mail ballot, right? Like that's, and that can kind of shift, unfortunately, on like a day-to-day basis. So that's why, particularly for tax increases, we're looking for that 60%. But you're right. If a tax increase wasn't part of it, we wouldn't need to kind of build in that much of a cushion in terms of our expectations. So.
So I think what I'm understanding you're saying is, you might be willing to accept like a 55 and feel confident if it didn't have a tax increase.
Sure.
Versus 60 with a tax increase, because it has that.
Yeah. And, you know, I don't want to turn it into a hard and fast rule either.
It's just guidance. Yeah.
Yeah. But pretty much, it's kind of like that, that 40 to 60% range. Like, if something hit me in under 40, my advice would always be, should probably wait on this and do some more education, right? So we're obviously nowhere near that low, but we're also not quite at 60. And so it's kind of, like, it's in the realm of, yeah, this is something where, yep, people need to be educated. There needs to be that effort to make sure that folks understand what's going on, what the impacts would be. But at the same time, it's certainly not going to be dead on arrival. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think that's all the questions we have for this portion of the presentation. If you can move forward.
No, I'm sorry. So we'll start out with a little bit of our outreach collateral. I'll walk you through what that engagement looked like. We started out with our Lafayette Listens Project webpage. That was kind of the hub of where all of our collateral material was kept. We had our brochures, we had the project renderings, we had all of the recordings for the meetings that we held, so that people who weren't able to attend the meetings could watch them. We had some FAQ. So the Lafayette Listens website was, again, that hub for all of the information. We also set up some information stations at different facilities throughout the city. We had one at the rec center, the library, the senior center, and city hall. You can see a picture there, the one that was set up at the rec center. And at those stations, we had the four-page brochure in English and Spanish. We had display boards that walked folks through each of the facility projects. And then we had the QR codes that would take folks directly to the website and to the questionnaire where they could answer some questions about the projects. We ran newsletter articles in the connection in April and May to give folks some information about the project and what was going on with this. We sent out email blasts to specific distribution lists. We had our city news flashes go out through the website. And certainly, we had social media posts that were blasted throughout the time period of April and May. And we were promoting both the information sessions that were open to the public, as well as just broad public information about the projects, and encouraging people to fill out the questionnaire. And then lastly, we hosted a booth at Art Night Out to kind of engage folks as they walk through. You have it?
Thank you, Director Wilmot. So as Director Wilmot just went through, the poll that Ryan discussed was really just one component of this larger engagement strategy that we undertook and presented to council back at your February workshop. And so we had a number of other engagement and really informational components. And we wanted to summarize all of the city-led engagement pieces into a report, which was included in your packet. And this consisted of feedback from the public input sessions, the meetings with boards and commissions, as well as our community questionnaire. There's a lot of information in there. We tried to summarize by key themes, but also include all the verbatim responses for you, just for, to support transparency. And so the intent of this was really to complement the statistically valid polling that was done, and try to get more of a qualitative look at what our residents were feeling. And so I'll walk through the four kind of high-level key themes from this engagement process. But again, there's quite a bit of information in the report that was in your packet. And so the first theme that we heard from our feedback and engagement was about the projects themselves. And this really aligns with, in terms of trends, what we saw in the Magellan poll. And that was that the service center and recreation center received the most support. So in the city questionnaire, respondents were asked to gauge and indicate, first, whether they understood the need for the project, and second, whether they would actually support an investment through a tax increase in the project. In terms of recreation center, 90% of respondents understood the need, and 86% indicated support for the project. Service center was a close second, with 85% understanding the need, and 78% supporting investment in the project. And then the civic center came in third, with 61% understanding the need and the value of the building, with just shy of 50% supporting investment in the project. We also heard some respondents in kind of the open-ended responses, indicating that they feel the project should be separated into separate questions if any of them should move forward. Second theme was about the revenue source or the potential tax increase. And so there was some concern about increased taxes, but of those And so there was some concern about increased taxes, but of those who supported either, either potential tax increase, the property tax was slightly more favorable. So the property tax received 56 support in this questionnaire, which is pretty similar to what we saw in the Magellan poll, whereas the sales tax saw 47% support for that. On the property tax piece, the survey also allowed people, if they weren't supportive of the full tax amount, to support all three projects. It did allow them to select, you know, not this amount, but perhaps a lesser amount. And of those, 58% indicated that they would support some level of a lesser amount, could be as anywhere from $5 to $20 in different, different brackets that are outlined in your report, per month, that is. And then we heard from respondents that there was some general concern over increased taxes in the city citing our already high sales and property taxes. Third theme was about the timing of the projects, and this came up in your question, Councilor Barnes. You know, the, the way this, the way this played out, we had a lot of these discussions at some really peak moments of uncertainty in terms of national, international trade policy, which certainly impacts our, we are not immune to those impacts, particularly as it comes to construction. So we heard, particularly at our first session, which was in early April, there was some concern over that uncertainty and specifically how it might impact the construction, construction field, construction costs related to these projects. Respondents indicated some concern over the economic pressures that households are feeling. And then we heard specifically from our senior advisory board, concern for potential additional burden by a property tax on those who are living on a fixed income. And then we heard from a couple, this wasn't overwhelming, but wanted to note it as, fell in with these themes, some other pri, other priorities that respondents felt were higher on the list than new facilities, such as filling vacant buildings or the transportation infrastructure. All of that said, the fourth theme was that these projects really seemed to be viewed as valuable investments in our future. So this was kind of taking the, the money or the tax piece out of it and just talking about the projects, understanding the perception of the value of the projects. And 72% indicated that they would be valuable investments for the city and 71% agreed that they should be a priority for the city. We then asked a series of questions that kind of aligned with what the Magellan strategies poll did, asking about the importance of energy efficiency, accessibility, et cetera. And those all had overwhelmingly positive support, over 70% and above. And then a number of people in the open-ended responses also indicated that they felt specifically the recreation center and service center would be good investments for the long-term future of Lafayette and its residents. So those are kind of the four themes. If it's okay with council, we just have one next step slide and then we'll turn it over for questions and we'll turn it over to Deputy Manager Davis.
Okay. Thanks, Alex. Debbie? All right. So just to kind of recap on the process, we are now in the kind of reporting the findings of all the engagement pipeline. Next step would be to get direction from council. We are hoping this evening that we can have some discussion and hear a little bit about sort of where you are with this. We're kind of backing into that green section is sort of the timeline that we would have to look at if there's any desire for action in this year. We would have an August 19th kind of deadline for the ballot certification, and so that puts us kind of backing into that timeline with a couple of months to have to get all of that done. There would be a number of conversations we would have to have. Again, we, we have bond council here. This evening, we would need to have conversations with them about, you know, what that would, what the ballot language would, would look like, how we would structure that type of bond. If you did multiple projects, how they would be, if you would want them sort of all in one package, if you would want them, you know, kind of, you know, sequenced in some way, if we would do them all at once, or if we would have them sort of phased. So there, there would need to be kind of a lot of discussion between that time to sort of figure out how we would move forward. We feel we could do that if that's the desire of council, but we just would, would need to kind of get moving on that. So tonight, we have the opportunity for you all, yeah, Alex has the, to engage in, you know, any questions with us and discussion. We, we would love to hear if you're prepared to discuss advancing any of the projects. And if so, do you have any preferences for specific projects or groupings? And also, do you have any preferences for timing? So that's all we have for this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So I guess we'll first, before we get to the discussion questions, we'll start with any general questions about the presentation, if there are any? And then we'll get to opinions on, on the other matters. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question about something. It just left me. Can anyone else come up with that?
I can come up with a question. Katie, please remind me again, if, I think you split them out. Like if we were just to do rec center, it costs this much per $685 home. If we were to do this, this is how much. Can you split that 24 amount, that, that monthly amount?
Yeah, for each project?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, yep, yep. So if you look at kind of the, the home average price, which we had put based upon last year's 685,000, for the service center, it'd be $24 a year.
Yep.
Civic center and recreation center would be 136 a year.
And that's for private or individual?
Each individual, so that, that total, right, puts us just under that.
It's around $296.
Yeah, $300 mark. And if you recall, I believe the, when you combine all of your total property taxes that we did kind of at the last presentation, average, that same average homeowner pays a couple thousand each year.
Thank you.
I have another question too, just a reminder question, same thing. The water per, water park amount is going, rolling off at the end of this year?
End of next, mid next year, yeah.
Next year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that's gone down to a pretty small mill at this point as, you know, the home prices have increased, so.
Do you remember your question?
I get it. Yeah. So the question, what, because reading through the comments, the qualitative responses, I was, I was, I noticed that some of the respondents wrote in that they didn't have enough information. And I'm looking at the spread, the, the communications department, I think, I don't know how much more you could have done. And people wrote in to their surveys that they didn't have enough information. I was just wondering if you could comment on what happened there? Is that they, any comments on why someone would say they don't have enough information about it when they're filling out the survey?
I would say, you know, if they, if they took the time to read through the information that was provided on the website, you know, all the information was there, perhaps they didn't. So a lot of times when we were encouraging folks to take that questionnaire, we didn't send them right to the link to the questionnaire. We sent them to the webpage, hoping, you know, that they would educate themselves and read through all the material before just taking the questionnaire. I mean, it's, it's a lot. I mean, you had three projects, it was a lot of information to go through.
Councilor Barnes, I'll say just from doing some of those open houses that we had, there, sometimes people want a lot of the details of like, well, where will a sauna be located? Where will X be located? And so I could imagine, or, you know, how much exact energy are we going to save? How much exact water? And so there, I think there will always be some of those that maybe even if they had the information we provided, they still wanted a little bit more to know. And so we got a lot of questions about, you know, well, what exactly is going right here? And it's like, well, that will be part of the design process after it, which is hard for kind of people to reconcile too, like, well, why would I approve it until I know exactly what's happening? And so we tried to balance that. At least, you know, we could speak to kind of what we heard when we did get to have that two-way conversation versus the survey and the, our online one was a one-way conversation. And so that, that would be the only thing that I could probably provide based upon our experiences, having those more in-person events.
I also wonder if some of that, I don't have enough information, could be, are there going to be tariffs? How will those tariffs affect me? Will they go up? Will they go down? I don't know what, will I have a job for some people, you know, who work in federal government? There may be a whole, it sounded like what I read to the, the questions. People are just generally unable to predict where they're going to be in the next few months or next year.
That, that's helpful because I, I, the list of what you've covered in this amount of time and the way you've covered it, I think it's, I don't want to say unique, but I thought it was very broad coverage. So I just was wondering what might have led to some of those comments. And there were a lot, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding the presentation, Councilor Viger?
I have one, and it's kind of going to expand on Councilor Barnes' question, and it's about that specifically. So from the communication standpoint, I think from the feedback, the, I don't want to speak for this council, but I think the last time we spoke about this, the majority of us saw the service center as kind of being the one that needed the most amount of immediate upgrades. But that's really hard to kind of put on someone when they're only kind of reading something, right? We haven't the ability to go actually look at it. I think just from the numbers alone, in terms of when it was broken down to individual projects, only the rec center got like 17% and only service center got 3%. And that's, that's a huge difference when one is vastly more expensive than the other. And to us at least, one is far more important, and it is the one that costs a lot less money. So going forward, if this were to go on the ballot, how do you do that? How do you educate people on what is actually needed there? Because everyone can go to rec center, everyone can come here, but not everyone is going to go to that service center. So how does a city go about doing that?
I think a video would probably be a, a helpful tool to do that, to let people walk through that, to see if that could be a tool.
Yeah, I think for the people who engaged in the, the meetings, we got good feedback on the service center. So when they really saw some of the pictures, so, you know, it could be that some people took the survey and didn't, you know, they just might have seen a couple of the pictures. But when they really heard us talk about the conditions, we, we heard a lot of good feedback. People were like, well, obviously that's very important. I mean, that was pretty consistent, I think, in the feedback we heard from people who engaged kind of one-on-one. They felt like that was pretty important and that that, those were a lot of our core operations happened. So I think it's having more of that type of engagement, really explaining to them, this is what happens there and this is why it's important. They're like, oh, that's where parks does this, that's where our, you know, streets operations happen. So I think it's maybe bringing more to life around those conversations versus just kind of seeing on paper, you know?
Okay. That's, that's based off two things. So I've talked to a lot of people about this, and that's always a pushback I get.
Yeah.
And then also just reading, like, I'm sure most of you read through the individual comments that come in, that came through the survey. Most of, a lot of the comments were like, this is fine, the service center is fine, services are happening, we don't need to upgrade this. So I just wanted to know, you know, how do we, how do we educate folks on what's the money's actually going to, which we all think is a very necessary project that maybe others can't see.
I don't know if that was a question or are you just reiterating that?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you know where I'm coming from.
Exactly. Thank you. Councilor Agius?
Yes. If a property tax increase is voted on and approved, what happens when the projects are fully funded? Are those funds then earmarked for something else?
No, that the property tax doesn't continue in perpetuity. So it's basically the property taxes pay off a certain time limit of debt service, similar to what we're seeing with the Great Outdoors Water Parks. As soon as that, that debt service has been paid off, the property tax goes away automatically.
All right. Any other questions before we get into discussion? All right. So staff has proposed some questions, or some guiding questions for us. Just wanted to get opinions from, from council to see, you know, if we're interested in advancing some of these, I don't know if we need to, I, I, as, as our deputy manager mentioned later, earlier, that we will be having discussion later regarding like specifically the property tax versus sales tax, the timing of that? Or would you like guidance on that now?
Yeah, I think, I think any guidance you can provide that you feel comfortable would be great. And also any questions, I mean, anything moving forward specifically, I mean, we can tee up for future conversations too.
So any opinions on, on the financing, on the bundling of the three projects, on the timing of the, of, of the ballot initiatives, any of that stuff? Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it was in the slide deck, but I believe there's a, there's a pie chart regarding the people's approval of a property tax increase that is less than, less than the amount.
Yeah, folks that weren't initially interested in the property tax increase would possibly be interested if it was a lesser amount. Is it 58%?
I, yeah, I'm trying to get this real quick.
Yeah, it was 58%.
It was 58%.
Yeah.
And it was somewhere, it was like.
It was, so that, that's combining all the options. We gave different options of say $5 to $10 per month, $10 to $15 per month, so.
It was $10 to $15, yeah, that went.
Okay, yeah. And so that 58 is combining all of those who would say they would support a lesser amount of those different options. So it's not 58% for a, say, a $10 per month increase, if that makes sense?
Okay.
But, but overall, there was a 56% support, supported a property tax increase.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think it was 58.
But no, 58 is of, of the folks that were not initially interested, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yes.
But would be interested, not in the proposed amount, but in, in a lesser amount.
Right.
Yeah. Thoughts and opinions on some of these discussion items? Hopefully we can get a consensus here, so staff has direction to work with. Councilor Agius?
So if I had to rank the three projects, I would go service center first, then rec center, then civic center. Something that stuck out from reading all of the comments, why are we doing all three projects at the same time? And I think I do agree, so I would bundle together the service center and the rec center and put the civic center out either a year or more.
Okay. And then for those, those first two, you'd want that on the ballot for this year, 2025?
Yes.
And then you can return to the other one later? Okay. And then do you, would you be supportive more so of pursuing to pay back these bonds as sales tax, property tax? Or any thoughts on that?
I would prefer property tax to sales tax.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Others?
I have one other question. How long would the bond go for?
We'd recommend 20 years.
20 years. 20 years.
Okay.
I'll start with the front. I think we should run it this year, and it should either have two or three on it. Definitely a property tax. And some of my thoughts being that, one of the things I like about Lafayette is they don't try to change everything every single year. Then it feels like you're constantly being hit by a wave of water over and over. So part of me likes running all three and testing it out and seeing we could, we could be just fine, you know? And that would set us up for the future, which is what some of the comments I heard is, why didn't you think about this earlier? Well, we're thinking about it now because, you know, there's one that, on the maintenance center, sure, we're probably too late, but maybe even too late on the rec center and should have done more. But the civic center is, is forward-thinking. Because I do believe if a civic, civic center is, is built and we are thinking about the possibility of moving the court over, that does answer what at least one or two people said, I'd like to see us be able to expand our police services. And so if you can move courts from where police are, you can repurpose that, you know, property as well. So I guess I'm thinking in terms of, there's definitely two that have to be done, so to speak, from this survey. And then there's one that's more forward-thinking. So I think it's a matter of philosophically, where do you want to go? I don't believe, as somebody who works with federal funds on a daily basis, I don't believe we're going to be able to predict anything for three more years. So running this this year, running it next year, everybody's going to be in the same boat next year. They're still going to be guessing, how, how do I feel about all of this? There's been too much, somebody loses a job, then that job becomes open again, and then they move it around. So that's why I say, it's just, it, it's a difficult time. But I don't think local government is, you know, personally we're tied to our increases in taxes and that, that are not set by us. But local government is where we're stable right now. Local government is, has the predictability that we're not receiving from the federal government.
Okay. Thank you. Others?
Did you specify which two?
Big service center, rec center.
Yeah.
But you would be okay with all three?
Yeah, I'm good with all three. I'm also good with two, is what I was saying, is, you know, I think you have to go with the survey and 80% of the people want to do the rec center, so that's overwhelming. And if, and, and they said, if that's on the matter, we're more likely to. And if, and, and they said, if that's on the matter, we're more likely to vote yes. So we all agree that the maintenance center is scary, you know, in terms of where it's at right now. So it has to be done. So tying those two together, if I can get that maintenance center done, you know, and get the people, what the people seem to be asking for on the rec center, which is an operational pool that can be used by the swim team, you know, the, our high school swim team, and our kids, and the adults who are using it, if we can get that, yeah, I think that's important.
And if we got those two, push the third one out till next year, or?
No, I, I think if you run, that's where I was saying, I don't, I don't know, I distrust that a bond, separating and doing two this year and one next year is going to work.
Right.
I mean, we all know what's on the ballot, well, maybe you don't, but we know that they're going to ask for more money on the ballot for school lunch, breakfast and lunch. I don't know, but I'm getting a little tired of constantly being asked on that, instead of somebody saying, well, maybe we need to just pay for lunch and not breakfast, or, and then, you know, lean our federal funds. So there, I understand where somebody might be saying, would I want to do more? I, I don't, I, I have distrust that running one bond issue for two this year and a, and a totally different bond for next year would work.
Thanks. Good. Definitely want to hear from others, so we can give staff direction here. Councilor Tapia Vega?
So I'm, I'm in a grant, I'm in agreement with Councilor Sampson and Councilor Agios. Not to make anyone's life harder, to make ballots any longer, but I think, I, I think for me, there's two, the rec center and the service center that are, those have to go, those, those have to be upgraded, those are needed immediately. But what if, and again, not to make anyone's life harder, we throw the other one on separately? So grouping, we need to group those two, at least in my, my view. Those, those need to be looked at and hopefully approved by the voters. The other one, I can go back and forth on. I can, I can group it with the other, if we want to go all three, if this council thinks all three is the best way to go, or if we want to just put it separately, let the voters decide. Again, I, I'm not one that would like longer ballots, but...
It might be setting the other one up for failure, though.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's up to the voters, right? If we want to set it all three, we might be setting us up for failure because it's too big of a number. Ultimately, the two that are necessary to me are the rec center and the service center. The other one, we can kind of go back and forth. And if we want to throw it to them, just give it to them this year. I think, I agree with Councilor Sampson, that waiting for next year isn't the best idea. Just give it to them all this year. And the majority of council thinks that all three together's, I'm, I'm willing to, I'm willing to do that too. But I just, I know for a fact that those two need to be grouped, because when I initial, well, thank God for polling, because I originally thought, maybe we could just separate all three and see what the voters want, but it doesn't seem like the service center alone is going to get anyone to really vote for it. We need to group it with the rec center. And those are the two that need the most immediate of upgrades, so I would like to put those two together, and then I'm happy to have a conversation on the third.
Anyone else? Or should we just go with what's already been said? I mean, any objections, feel any differently?
I don't know if we really have much different, I, I think they're really the thoughts I would generally support. I, I kind of think I'm a little bit leaning towards, you know, to me, this has been a frustrating conversation, because why did we handle this five years ago, some of these things, right? And so, to your point of, well, we're doing it now, and while the numbers feel hard, and I, you know, some of the feedback we've gotten, you know, the property, like, the environment is challenging, well, in ten years, we're going to be really happy that we have a really nice civic center, a really nice rec center, and a service center that meets our needs, right? And so, you know, sometimes we have to do, take a little bit of short-term pain to have, to really set people up in ten, fifteen, twenty years in this community. And so I think I'm leaning a little bit towards all three of them, with that in mind, to say, let's be really intentional and smart about how we do these things and what we put there, and we're going to have some new assets opening up, this building potentially, the senior center, like, how can we, you know, help the financial piece of this lessen the impact a little bit through smart decisions there? But I think a little bit, that's where I'm leaning at this point. Yeah.
And I'll just jump in now, because I agree with what, what you just said there. I think it, I think it'd be interventive just to put all three on together at once this year, 2025, property tax increase, because I just feel like that's, as we've seen in the polling, I feel like that's most likely to get everything passed, and I don't want to have to go back to the voters again next year with an additional ask as well. And then just the timing of paying things back, I think it'd be better to have it all aligned at once. And so that'd be, that'd be my, you know, preference as well. If you two want to add anything?
No, I agree. I, I think if we need to put all three, I would put all three this year, and I do agree with the prioritization, but I just think that you need to put them through, all three together. Again, when you look at collectively, the whole package, it's just unfortunately, time of year, time for all three things to be taken care of. I mean, you, you walk around City Hall, and I was here for a meeting earlier today, and watching staff running around trying to find meeting rooms was just, I mean, and then you look at meeting room spaces converted to office spaces, it's bursting at the seams here, and I think it's just necessary. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, yeah. So looking at the, the results of the survey, I'm, I'm with Councilor Tapia Vega and Councilor Agios in that I want to separate out the civic, the civic center from the rec center and the service center. And I would like to see, like, I don't see any reason to delay the, the vote on all three of them, and I, I understand it could be problematic, and that might cause both of them to fail, to separate them out. But I, from the results I saw, I, I think we need to recognize the fact that people really want that rec center, and I want to see this, like, I can't help but get to see the civic center get across, I mean, the service center get across the line. And I just feel like the residents should have the option to say, let's do something else with the civic center. So I would go as run all three of them, but bundle the rec center and the service center under property tax.
But then, okay, then the civic center will be run separately, okay.
And I think in the senior advisory board, they were, they were back and forth with sales tax versus property tax, but they didn't, so they didn't have a commitment on either one of those, but it seems from the results, property taxes.
Okay, good. I think one final thing to consider is, like, when we think about the civic center, you know, it's much more than just a place to have to work. The community could really utilize that newly-built space, when we talk about youth spaces, youth centers, places for our boards and commissions, to me, because by now, like, the, probably the only real meeting space we have is the library, you know, and so we wanted to give, you know, our, when, if, if nonprofits or after-school groups or any organizations are interested in utilizing some of that space, or thi, and then we think about this building, as Council Fred mentioned, right, other assets like the senior center, folks that are asking for, you know, more space, that's something to consider as well. Anyways, so based off of these conversations, it looks like it's unanimous in the sense of an agreement to get the service center and the rec center on this year's ballot, 2025, with, with, with a property tax increase. And then, as far as the civic center goes, it looks like the three of us would like to bundle them all together at once. Some of us may be open to the option as well, and then a couple of us would like to see it set. But when, when we look at consensus, you know, if, I mean, do we feel like, based off of that, we would be okay with bundling all three for 2025?
Mayor, there's also the opportunity for us, because we will have to come back again, to provide the language of what both would look like, just having two questions or having one question, because with a bond package that large, you're going to have to stagger kind of the debt financing anyway when we issue the debt, and so it might be helpful to visually see what that looks like and kind of compare contrast if it's one question or if it's two questions, where the service center and rec center are combined, and civic center stands alone, if you, if that would be helpful instead of making the decision tonight.
So we see both, both options then?
Yeah, I think that's fair, and gives, you know, yeah, gives us, gives us a better understanding of what it will actually look like if, if approved.
Is there a difference in cost versus having two questions versus one question on the ballot?
There will be, but it will probably be minimal. The cost of what we pay for is largely dependent on what kind of the countywide costs are, and then they're divided up by the number of questions that each municipality has, and we're kind of unclear right now what other municipalities are doing. So it's probably for one question, going to be this amount, and you add a little bit more, it's just proportional to the total amount of questions countywide.
It'll be the same amount as the maintenance service center per month.
All right, just, do you, do you all feel like you have the direction you need to move forward? Do you feel like you're, you're good to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, council and staff, for that discussion, and thank you for engaging the community. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more of that, and so hopefully, folks are, folks are getting engaged and excited about what's to come.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that wraps up item one for tonight, which will bring us, as folks transition out, we'll give them a minute. And then in a minute here, we'll get started with item two, which is potential board commission and committee program updates. Thanks, guys.
Yeah, these are perfect in like coffee or something like that, because they like melt right when you put them in.
So you need to dunk them, is what you're saying?
You don't need to, they're soft enough. If you did dunk, it would be like perfect. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It's an important conversation.
I guess our third item now.
Counsel, that, that was supposed to be counsel report, how were the cookies?
Yeah, we, we have our discussion regarding a potential board commission and committee updates. We have our deputy city manager, Megan Davis, to get us started.
Okay, Alex is actually going to kick us off.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, good evening. Let's, yeah, tonight, we're here for a pretty brief conversation around some potential board commission and committee program updates, so I'll walk through a brief background. We do want to use this as an opportunity to kind of report out on that new semi-annual recruitment process, now that as of last week, we've officially gone through a whole process. We do have a couple items for discussion. We have, just for, so you understand lay of the land, we do just have one slide for each, so I'll go through each, provide the context, and turn it over for questions and discussion. In terms of background, so as you were all well aware, throughout last year, we came before you for a number of updates to our board commission and committee program, and that was really focused on kind of the process and getting the recruitment all lined up, adjusting some of our terms so that they all aligned and were consistent in that manner. And now we're looking at composition of the boards themselves. And this is really coming from a new ideas item that came up a few months ago with a question about term limits, and we were going to, in response to that, provide some information as well as use this as an opportunity for some other discussions regarding our boards and commissions. And to, to get to this point, just for your context, we do have almost monthly routine staff liaison meetings. That came as part of the transition to the semi-annual process. We found them very valuable to just share practices, kind of ensure that we're improving consistency in how we're doing these pieces. And so a number of times throughout this, I'll note some feedback we heard from the staff liaisons, and that's, again, liaisons from all of our boards, commissions, and committees. And so the purpose for tonight's discussion is really just to, one, respond to that new ideas item, but then introduce these and discuss these potential updates, gauge your interest in moving forward with some, any, or none, and then, again, get some feedback on some potential items. So as mentioned, do just want to use this opportunity to formally report out on our semi-annual recruitment process. So as of last Tuesday, with those spring board and commission appointments, this was officially the, the end of the, that first full year cycle, which kicked off with an open house in August of last year, which was almost a year ago, easy to think. So in terms of successes for this transition to this new program, we felt like the open house was really successful. We had representation from every single board, commission, and committee at the city. We felt it was well-attended. I think we had almost thirty-five attendees from the public come learn more about our boards and commissions, engage with staff, representatives from the boards, and really just build some interest in the boards themselves, which we saw, and, you know, my third bullet to cut to the chase there, we saw that many of our boards and commissions were fully seated for the first time in many years as a result of that open house process and our coordinated recruitment communications and efforts. I do just want to touch as well on the training piece. So we, once all the terms were aligned, it allowed us to provide a training for all boards and commission members. We asked both new members and those who have already been on, or historically been on boards, to come to that training, just to make sure they're all getting the same information. It was a pretty comprehensive training led by staff and some of our city attorney's office representatives, covering everything from, you know, open meetings laws, quorum, the functions of vice chairs, chairs, meeting management, work planning, really spanned the gamut of all the topics that are applicable to our boards and commissions. So we felt like that was an effective training. It was recorded, we provided two sessions, and again, recorded them to provide to the members who were appointed last week, so they'll be able to review the training, and we'll do that again in December after our primary recruitment process. As with any pilot or new process, we do have a couple lessons learned. The first is related to our work planning, and this hopefully is not a surprise, we kind of discussed this at your April workshop, and we came with the citywide work plan. It's just going to be an iterative process that we continue to refine, to make sure that we're engaging the boards and commissions in a time and in a way that makes sense with the larger citywide work planning, budget, council retreats, et cetera. So that's going to continue to be refined, but we felt like we made some good headway this year with at least having discussions regarding 2024 accomplishments, priorities for each board for 2025, and providing that to council. And then the second lesson is really, is admittedly kind of more internal, but we, we do have some, a bit of clarifying in our policies and procedures to do specifically as it relates to alternates. As you'll see in a few slides, not all of our boards and commissions have alternates, so we had a bit of inconsistencies with promoting those recruitment opportunities and making sure, communicating with applicants that they were essentially signed under, that they were clear on what they were applying for, making sure they wanted to be an alternate versus just a standard board member. So that's kind of the, the report out there, but in terms of items for discussion, first is term limits, and so for just some, I know council's all aware of this, but for those who might be tuning in at home, when we're talking about term limits, we're not talking about term lengths. Every single board and commission has a designated term length, typically between two to four years, depending on the board and the member in the board in some cases. And, but only one of them, our sustainability, resilience, and advisory board, has actual limits to the number of terms that a, a member may serve. And so we wanted to understand what was done in some neighboring communities, and so we did a, a survey. We looked at our, kind of mostly our immediate neighbors, you look at Holder, Broomfield, Erie, Lewisville, and Longmont, and of those, we only found one, and it was the city and county of Broomfield that does utilize some term limits for their board and commission members. And they actually utilize a, a consistent kind of blanket approach for every board and commission member can serve up to two consecutive four-year terms. So it mirrors what you have with city council, but they, they do the same thing for their boards and commissions. We, as mentioned, also met as a staff liaison group to kind of discuss the pros and cons of this, and probably no surprise, there was not any, anything super consistent or, or support for necessarily a one-size-fits-all approach, but the benefits that we discussed was the ability to increase membership diversity. You know, we're lucky that a lot of our boards and commissions have some members who are very interested and willing and wanting to serve on these boards for a number of years, and so should there, if there were to be term limits implemented, that would potentially increase the diversity in, on the boards themselves, as well as improving access for boards and commissions with, that might have more applicants and available seats. This, this totally varies, dependent upon the board, is they're all topic-specific, you know, some have more interest than others, but we do see some boards that have far, far more applicants than are seats available, and so it could improve the access for members of our community in that regard. In terms of challenges, as probably no surprise, it's kind of the flip side, the other side of the coin of the benefits, there's potential loss of institutional knowledge, you know, with members who have been on for a while, there would be some loss of that institutional knowledge and their understanding of projects and procedures, as well as potentially further reducing membership for boards that struggle to recruit members. So the next item for discussion was the, the size of the board. So again, you know, when looking at that survey of the communities around us, our, our boards range in size from seven to thirteen members, with thirteen members being the youth advisory board. And that put us pretty strongly as an outlier in the region for large, for having, in terms of larger board size within our immediate neighbors. And we got some feedback from both... both staff and chairs for boards or those typically leading the meetings, and understanding some of the challenge with the larger board size specifically. And one that we heard a couple times was quorum. You know, as the size of the board increases, the threshold for quorum increases, as well as the number of people who could attend, the number of variables, I guess you could say, people who might be missing. And so we've, that kind of results in some quorum challenges. If you recall, that was really one of the key drivers for reducing the size of the Youth Advisory Board last year that was supported by council. And the next three items are all kind of related in terms of just having the, the actual, running a meeting with a large group, and one is challenges with general meeting management. There can be challenge, more, more challenge reaching consensus. And then the third one, a number of our boards engage in fairly technical discussions, specifically the ones that come to mind are like Planning Commission, Sustainability, Resilience, Advisory Board. They can have some pretty technical discussions. And the bigger the group, in order to support and ensure that those present have a chance to speak, we heard from a couple boards that it can just kind of hamper their ability to really engage in a super robust dialogue on those technical matters, just, again, because, purely because the number of people engaging in the discussion. And then finally, because these boards only meet once a month, and we want, we want to support some, some level of momentum and consistency with how their meetings run, there's typically some level, for those who can't attend meetings from one event to the next, there's typically some level of information given to them in advance, whether that's a staff member meeting, with them to explain kind of the information that was provided before, so they walk into a meeting informed, or additional time during a meeting necessary to cover the background on specific items. As you have more people, more people potentially not there, that just kind of increases the potential meeting time to do that. And so as mentioned, last year, council was supportive of reducing the size of the Youth Advisory Board down to 13 members, as well as their volunteer service squad. And due to a lot of the challenges cited here, and we did hear from, at least our staff liaison, that this really, reducing the size really supported the momentum of the board. It allowed them to actually meet and conduct business, because they have better, they're more likely to meet quorum, and that these, this change really supported their function as a board. And so we had a proposal, the next largest board, if we just kind of lay them all out, the next largest board was the Sustainability, Resilience, and Advisory Board. I see the slide that says staff proposal. Should actually, actually, the S RAB is gonna, they're gonna discuss potentially reducing the size of that board, if council would be supportive of that, come up with a proposal and present it to council in some form for further discussion.
Do you feel they're interested in doing that? Okay.
And the last piece for discussion was alternate. So this is something that's not consistent across all of our boards and commissions. Currently, four boards and commissions use alternates. As of this time last year, there were six. Council supported, per the request of the boards, the Human Rights Board and Library Board, removal of their alternates, and now we're down to four. And interestingly, we've heard kind of a mixed, mixed reaction or mixed response to, to the function of alternates. In summary, those that don't have them want them, and those that have them have talked about not, not needing them. So there's no perfect approach to this. But again, we talked at the staff level of some potential benefits. And one is, you know, I mentioned those technical boards and commissions, specifically Planning Commission feels particularly applicable. They engage in these really technical discussions. They conduct business in a way that follows a pretty strict procedure, legal requirements. And so they're one that currently does not have alternates, but noted that it could be beneficial to have alternates because to have to essentially expose someone who might be interested in serving on the commission to the work of the commission before they're, you know, appointed a regular member and voting on these matters. On the flip side, you know, I mentioned the challenge with recruitment for alternates. That's just something we will have to be clear, as we're promoting these openings and discussing with applicants. And so tonight, we're not necessarily looking for direction in terms of a one-size-fits-all or cross-the-board approach, but would like to just open the discussion and see, as, as these boards, because they typically come to the staff liaisons asking for how they might go about doing this if they want alternates, just getting some sort, some sort of direction from council about how we would handle these requests. And then the last piece of information before, turn it over for questions and discussion. This is more informational than anything, but currently, for those who are unaware, we have our municipal code, which outlines the scope of all these boards and commissions. And then we also have the bylaws document that kind of outlines how the board functions in terms, and runs their business. In those bylaws, we also duplicate the scope that's included in the code section, which has caused confusion for some of our boards. And because it's in the bylaws, they think that they can change the scope of the board, and it's because the bylaws is their document versus the code, which has to be updated by city council. So we're gonna move forward with actually removing that scope language from the bylaws document, potentially referring back to the code language, but just to avoid any duplication and kind of misunderstanding of, of how the scope of the boards can be updated. And so just for your awareness, you've all seen this, this call-up process email where one of board updates their bylaws, staff send you the red line. You have up to two city council meetings to bring that up in a public forum to discuss those changes. So you'll likely see an increase of those as we make this change to our bylaws. And with that, I will turn it over to the mayor to see if there's any questions and discussion. Just because we covered a number of items, we listed them here.
Thank you.
No, no prompting questions this time, but at least the topics themselves.
Yeah, thank you. I think we'll just start off with questions first from council on any of these items. Counsel Sampson.
Do we have any idea of the percentage of board members that leave? I mean, I'm assuming most of them are on a three or four-year term. What is the percentage of board members that leave before their end of their four-year term? Oh, I would say maybe in the last five, let's say six to 10 years, somewhere in there.
I do not know.
Director Heisel has all the boards. Probably has some good anecdote evidence versus exact data.
I would say it depends on the board. So boards like the Human Rights Board had, I think, 31 members over the past five years. And then there are others, like the Library Board, where folks stay for many, many, many terms. So it really varies.
Okay. Tell me about the people that stay for many terms. Are they, do they tend to be homeowners? Do they tend to be people who are working full-time as well, or?
You know, from my experience, it's folks who lived here a long time and who are very engaged. But I think, again, it really, it really varies. You know, some of them are bringing really quite a lot of knowledge and expertise and background and are big contributors. It's tricky.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Gago.
Would term limits need to be consistent across all boards, or can it be on a board-to-board basis?
Is that a question for all of us, or is that a question for, is, can we, can we legally do that?
Just potentially in the future, if we do want to implement term limits, is it something that needs to be consistent across every single board?
That's a policy choice for you guys. Legally, you can do whatever, since they're in the code separately as boards?
No, so I guess it would be up to us.
I think, is S RAB already have term limits? So we already have one board.
Are they the only one?
Yeah. So we already have one board that does have term limits. So, yeah, it's possible for sure.
What are those term limits? Two terms?
Two, two.
Two terms, two years.
And then Planning Commission, Lura, and Dorothy DDA have term limits too.
Any commission does it?
They don't term limits?
Nope.
They stay until they're irritated and can't anymore.
I'm sure Thomas is on your third term.
Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, mayor. I love the ideas. Actually, I have to start off with saying thank you to Counselor Sampson and Alex, and our deputy city manager, and the directors, because I felt like when, when I got on council, that there was a lot of work that needs, that needed to happen, and it has happened, because it was a bit frustrating to me that there were boards and commissions that were doing stuff, and we don't know what the stuff was. And, you know, I'm really happy that we're getting it clear for the members who are there and what we're asking. And my, my understanding of what the boards and commissions are for is advisory, to help council. And we don't know what they're doing, because the process isn't working, and they're frustrated over and over, yada, yada, yada. It's nice to get this clarified. So I'm really, really happy with all of the huge amount of work that had to happen to move this forward. So thank you all for doing that. And I, I like, at first, I was all about term limits for all the boards and commissions, but thank you for pointing out the challenges with term limits and that loss of institutional knowledge, I think, is abundantly clear in some cases. And it would be nice to not lose any more of that institutional knowledge. I really appreciated that, that piece. And with the Youth Advisory Board, I know that wasn't something that was super popular when it's brought up, but if that's gonna get us through discussions and keep us moving forward, I'm, I'm open to having that discussion, because I feel like there's so much that we could get from the boards and commissions. And the, the, the idea that technical discussions happen in only some of the boards, I understand, but that's probably science and engineering, and who knows what. I don't understand science and engineering. But when you talk about things from each one of these boards and commissions, I think they all have a reason to have really good discussions. I think they should all be able to do that, whatever it takes to make sure that they can do that. I want to be supportive of that. So I appreciate the flexibility and all the information that we're getting regarding those. So I'm just curious for the rest of my colleagues here, if you see the boards and commissions as advisors to council, or more of individual groups that are supporting community interests, or how you see the board, the advisory boards? Because I feel like we're on the way, but I'd really like some more support on policy decisions that we're making from boards and commissions that have relevance to that, including the arts, because I feel like, as an art city, there's some things that we don't always hear about that could be promoted through our arts focus.
You know, I think, you know, generally, those boards have been seen as a group, as advisors to council. They're not, you know, working with the city attorney to draft an ordinance and then bring it to us for approval or denial. It really is like educating us on like best practices and dealing with whatever issue that they specialize in. It's providing us with updates on, you know, events and initiatives that they have going on in the city, and then asking us for, you know, feedback and things like that. And really, they are, they serve at the pleasure of council. And, you know, we have the ability to, you know, give guidance on what we want to see from them, as well as, you know, add and remove members and have some sort of oversight. You know, that's generally what, what they're useful, you know, how, how they operate. But once again, I think that's, well, part of the discussion tonight is like when we've had like bylaws versus what's written in the Charter or the code or whatever, about how the scope of their work, you know, it's part of the discussion. But I think, you know, to me, that's most appropriate if they operate in that capacity.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone else wants to, just other thoughts.
I agree with what you kind of said, mayor.
Okay.
Did you have anything else? Did you want to bring up regarding the sizes or alternates or anything like that?
Um, I, I guess the other thing I wanted to say is that one-size-fits-all doesn't necessarily work considering the population. And, but whatever's gonna have the discussions be most vital, I, I feel like when I watched Leesak and Rack come together, that it needed to be a bigger board, but with the struggles that they've had, functioning, you know, at the potential that they have, maybe it's a smaller size. So I think we haven't right-sized everything yet. So I'm okay with, I'm not really interested in term limits, because I don't want to, I don't want to lose that institutional knowledge. But as far as the sizes of the boards, and I still don't understand why, if alternate, there's a real good reason to have alternates. Maybe on Planning Commission, I got, that's one of the best reasons I've heard that explained. But I also don't want people who are alternates attending meetings knowing that they're good contributors and they're contributing, but they can't vote. So that's, that's what I struggle with.
So I don't think, I don't think we have planning, there's not alternates on Planning Commission.
No, he's saying they were, they could, they were considering.
Oh, were they? I'm sorry.
So, so for, for, this is, I guess, a question. For purposes of counting quorum, let's say a board has five members and two alternates, right? And three members, three regular members are gone, but the two alternates are there at the meeting. Can they, do they count as part of the quorum, and then would that board achieve quorum for the night?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I guess that would be.
Right, but alternates are required to be there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Whether or not they vote.
I think they're, they're, the intent is for them to be there so that they have the continuity of information, and then if someone isn't there, they step in, and then they, they would vote for the person who's absent.
And can I say, the only group that does that accurately is the Library Board. Everybody else is like, whatever, just vote. Sorry. I just, I visited each one of the boards and commissions in my first term, so I would sit there and go, this is all very different, depending on which one you're sitting at.
Okay.
Sure, okay. I don't like alternates. I, I get what you just said, and that scenario doesn't happen very often.
I guess it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, but I totally get what you're saying, and that is, quorum is the biggest reason to have alternates. But like, the other 11 meetings a year, they still have to sit there and they don't get a vote. At least they shouldn't, right? So I don't like alternates. Board size, I guess we can go back and forth on. I don't know, that maybe that should be based on each board. But Alex has something that really got me interested, and it's something we said last time. I really like the idea of just a standardized board. So regardless of who it is, two terms, four years per term, every single board. I'm not saying that's what Broomfield does, but I'm just saying, I really like the idea of standardization, just having a set term length, and if we want term limits, set it across the board. So maybe that's a question for my fellow counselors. Does standardization in terms of our board and commissions seem like something to be interested in? Because I get the question all the time, like, I want to join HRB, and I have to go in and check what that length is, and, you know, then I have to go check another one. And it's like, if I just know the answer for one, I know the answer for all.
I'll, I'll say I'm not sure why we do have varying terms, but I don't know the reasons why we do have varying terms. So fellow counselors, if you could explain why you feel that's important, then.
Well, right now isn't just one, right?
What, that has one?
Yeah.
Although PAC had one for a while. LCAC didn't, but PAC did, which I thought was kind of weird. That's what I'm saying, like, thank you for changing the scope, and also maybe taking out some of these things that they think that, that are in the code, but somehow they keep voting separately than the code and putting in to their bylaws. So, yeah, I think there, I would say standardization would at least help everybody understand, you know, be clearer on that. I don't mind making term limits longer, like, so I'm of the belief that a term length of four years is a long time. And I've seen a lot of people drop, you know. So like, you know, you go into a board, and, and people drop quickly, but it usually is also with life changes. You get a new job, you know, their kids, you know, four years is a kid in high school. Things change, you know. So if your kid graduates, you may be like, before your four years is up, you're, okay, I gotta get out, because we're moving, because my child's going to college somewhere else. I'm just saying that there's a lot of life changes that happen. I don't, I don't mind doing term limits. If, if we were to shorten the term length, I don't know what that would do. Like, let's say we did three years of a term length, and then the term limits maybe were five, you know, four, four times you could go. That extends it out 12 years. So you could have that institutional knowledge for a very long time, but you could still get, what I heard a lot of boards say, diversity, diversity, diversity. We, we tried to do it, we, councils now and in the past, have tried to do diversity in a different way, and couldn't change what's in our charter. So how do you get more diversity, I kept thinking, is having the opportunity to bring more people on, who might only have a few years that they can really say, I can commit to this.
So I think, you know, there's a lot to unpack in this conversation, and there's a lot of items to discuss. And just to kind of streamline the discussion, I just want to go through each one of them one by one, just hear quick thoughts, if you want. If you already shared it, that's fine, just so we can give staff some sort of direction. So we'll just start with the term. So, we'll just start with the term limits, because at the top, we're already on the topic of discussion. But, and Counselor Tapia Vega's already chimed in, Counselor Sampson, just from others, you know, quick thoughts on term limits? Um, is that something we want to pursue? We don't need to decide the amount right now, but it's something that we can ask staff to look into, um, and then come back at a later date.
Yeah.
Are we interested in pursuing term limits?
Sure.
I would want to survey my Boards and see what their interest is.
Okay. I'm wondering if we should all do that, or if it's better if staff does that?
Yeah, the liaisons are meeting, right?
Yeah.
So, are you all willing to do that?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then have that discussion at the Board meetings, and I guess we'll be in attendance at those anyways. Okay?
So, I think that's a good idea. Um, I will say that I, I don't think we're ready for term limits. Like, we have some Boards that have high demand, and their term limits make sense. But for Bor, I, I can, I can, at this point, I cannot imagine, like, HRB having term limits, right? I mean, they're already struggling to fill, right?
Oh, they're filled, aren't they?
Are they filled?
Woo!
They're all filled.
One, right?
One, one big.
They're filled for the first time in several years.
Which is amazing.
Give it up.
Yeah.
And I would love in two years to come back and say, hey, that's not a concern anymore. Um, but, you know, I just think, right, like, we have such varying kind of demand levels right now for these seats. Um, so I, you know, I, I personally like the idea of everything was perfect, if we had a lot of demand. And our recruitment, we saw continued increase and progress in our recruitment, which we have seen a really good step. Um, but I, I'm just not sure we're quite ready yet, quite honestly.
I'm just gonna summarize what I think of so far from council, and please, uh, let me know if you disagree with anything that I'm about to say. But I think, um, the thing, the best next steps would be for, for you all to weigh in with the Boards and Commissions, and come back to us when you hear, like, their thoughts and opinions on all these matters. But I think as of right now, council is interested in some form of term limits. Uh, maybe, they might be specific to a certain Board or to another. I think Planning Commission should definitely have term limits, especially because they're a decision-making body. Um, but anyways, um, but the other Boards as well, uh, having that discussion with them. Um, and then figuring out which, which are the Boards that are lacking consistent membership, and which are the ones that have too, uh, uh, you know, uh, too many applicants. Um, and then I think, in terms of, uh, Board size, um, actually, let's go to alternates first.
Oh, wait.
Oh, sorry.
I brought up term length, because that does play a role
Yeah.
in term limits. So, like Youth Advisory Board, I could actually see them wanting two term, two-year terms. Because who you are as a freshman and a sophomore is kinda different than who you are as a junior and senior. And it may have to do with what they're doing in the rest of their life. That happens throughout all Boards. So, if we're gonna ask on term limits, we do need to ask on, what would your ideal term length be?
Okay.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Oh, I said that that was a, that was a good question. Ask the.
Okay.
What's our range of term lengths now?
Two to four years?
One, well, yeah.
Oh, one.
Oh, yeah, it's long right now.
Yeah. But to four.
Yeah, but I think a maximum of four is probably good, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not the US Senate, yeah. Um, and so.
Ministry teacher.
Um, okay, that makes sense. Um, and then in terms of alternatives, um, you know, I think I really getting a consensus on that from the Boards is important, but it seems like from council, I mean, is, does anyone in council want to keep the alternates? Who is to have the benefit?
I'm sorry, just.
There's a list on here.
Yeah.
Senior Advisory Board, Open Space.
Esra.
Esra, that's two. But.
LCAC?
Es, uh.
Or Es, they all changed their names.
No, they don't. LCAC purposely said no. Remember, I brought that back about two years ago, and we got rid of it?
Okay, they did have term limits, because I was an alternate.
Yep.
All right, so your historic, I have it pulled up, just because I know they're working on the presentation. So, the Historic Preservation Board has two alternates, the Open Space Advisory Board has two alternates, the Senior Advisory Board has two, and the Sustainability Resilience has two.
And I can say, for the Historic Preservation Board, uh, we really don't have alternates. Like, there's nobody, there's nobody in those, they're vacant.
There's no one filling those seats, yeah.
I would say that's similar for Esra. There are people filling the seats, but there's no differentiation.
Oh.
So, I think you can let the Boards know that council is interested in removing the alternate position. How, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, didn't we already do that? We've already surveyed all the Boards on that in particular, and it came up exactly what staff said. Some of the Boards thought, oh, alternates is a great idea
Yeah.
because of what staff presented tonight. So, there's no reason to go back and survey.
I think they like having the option of having them. Some of them like to have them.
See, and I was thinking, what we should do is say,
Optional?
you can have the maximum of nine members on a Board, other than you, um, you can have maximum nine members. You can either have nine total, or like, seven and an alternate.
So, or we just simplify and say, it's optional. If you wanna have one, you can have one.
That's what it is right now. And, and half of them came back and said, we don't like this. So,
Don't like having the option.
they didn't like having alternates, and they felt like they couldn't also.
But they can remove them on their own, then, can't they?
No, they can't.
Well, no, that's, that's the question, is that right now, they have them, and they're, they're, some of them are actually in, in the code right now, that they have them. And so, then they have, we would have, we'll come back to you with a change, if they wanna change it. So, they would have to make the decision, then we would come back to make the change with you. So, that would be, that's sort of the process question, is that, you know, if, if at their discretion, they decide they wanna either add an alternate or two alternates, is that something you're comfortable with, them sort of making that decision and, and, you know, with staff, with the liaison, and coming back to you?
Which is why I brought up the maximum of nine. So, if you want to, if you have nine now, and you want an alternate or two, you have to reduce your total size. You can't say nine plus two alternates. You can't do opposite of what staff is saying, which is, make sure, don't go too large of a Board, because then you run into problems with quorum.
How many, how many Boards do we have that have more than nine, including alternates? Are there quite a few?
Esra's and.
Well, but Youth Advisory, then, that's, that's an exclusion.
Yeah, that's kinda.
But it's just Esra.
Just Esra.
And the Cultural Arts Board. Library Board and HRB also have nine, because they eliminated alternates and just made them regular.
Nine.
Right, so I like the nine idea.
Yeah.
You can decide if you want, if you wanna make, um.
I, so.
I'm, I'm, I like that idea, because if you wanna do seven regulars, two alternates, or you could even do five regulars and four alternates.
I wouldn't go there.
Um, just saying.
But I think the process is, is fine the way it is. It's like, if they wanna make the change, they work with their liaison to make the change, and bring the council, and we can discuss.
We do that.
Yeah, true.
And then, I mean, do we wanna put that limit of nine, or how do I understand that?
Can someone again explain to me what the point of an alternate is? Like, I'm, I just don't get it.
It's all just that quorum point.
Yeah, but like.
That's what it is.
We, so, so an alternate, if I take on an alternate role, I show up to every single meeting all year, and if no one misses in terms of quorum, I never do anything.
You don't though.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
You're part of the discussion, you just don't vote.
Yeah, but like, I, when I was on, when I was liaison to, uh, what was it, Open Space Grant, went from alternate to being the Chair, when their Chair left. Like, alternates have always been part of the discussion. They've always voted, I mean, maybe they should, from what I hear now, but like, they're just part of the Board. Why not just make them part of the Board and eliminate this alternate?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think part of it is that, that, you know, that is a small, smaller-sized Board. So, it does give more people an opportunity to participate, and then potentially to apply to be on it if the seat opens, um, and then to participate when somebody's gone. So, I mean, I think that was the intent, was to have someone to be able to participate in somebody's absence, just whenever that happened. So, to meet the quorum issue, and to have someone who's informed to be able to participate in the discussion when that person's gone, versus just having a smaller number of people vote. And to have sort of that pathway for someone else to join the Board who's participated, which I think is what the Planning Commission issue is too, is to have someone who gets to be a part of the process and understand the process. Because that is, you know, that's a complicated, more complicated commission to be on, is to have someone who's experienced. But I, you know.
But Planning specifically is the one that doesn't have alternates, right?
They don't.
Mm-mm.
No.
So, I mean, that pathway point too is, is kind of a good one. It's a good idea and concept. I don't know if our marketing is that necessarily, right?
Sure.
If we're gonna have alternates, I think we have to make it appealing to somebody that's like, maybe just wants to dip their toe, like, only a year, right? So, you don't have to commit to two years or four years. You're committing to just a year, you get to know the thing. And then, you know, hopefully, another spot will open, and you, you apply for that, and then you get on if you want, or you just leave after a year, it's no big deal.
And the other argument I've heard is that, like, some folks wanna get involved with the city, but just don't have the time. And so, they're happy to be, they would actually prefer to be an alternate. That way, they can miss meetings, and it wouldn't impact anything.
Don't alternates have to go to the meetings?
They, but, but it wouldn't impact, it wouldn't impact their, uh, quorum. That's fair. So, they can, like, if you have, like, you know, like, five kids, right?
So, it is confusing.
But that's why I think at the end of the day, it's fine, you can put it in the hands of the Boards, right? And let them make that decision on, on their behalf, in the best interest for them.
I'm gonna support, uh, Councilmember Tapia Vega, because my attitude is this. Mayor, when you wanted to be on City Council, you sat in this audience for two years. So, you could be informed. So, when they did have an opportunity that opened up, and you could, you could, uh, apply for that, you already knew what was going on. Why couldn't people who are interested just go to the meetings? Because that's really what an alternate is. You go to the meetings. Right, hey, there you go, there's our alternate to council. You go to the meetings, you listen, and I agree, I actually was up for an alternate position some years ago, and I, and it was a disincentive. I was like, do I wanna even go through this interview? Because if I can't, if I can't, well, you know me. If I can't vote, why would I go, go sit at these meetings? Why am I gonna commit? What, what's, you know, what's the incentive for me to keep going on that? So, you do have to recognize, while they say some people, it's an incentive, because they only wanna do some of it, I would say, go to meetings.
I, yeah, I'm convinced. I really don't have a strong opinion on this. Do we wanna just make the decision now, and just like, be done with it? Does anyone have any objections to eliminating alternates? And then what we'd have to do is then promote the current alternates to regular members, then, correct?
Yep.
I do have one issue when it comes to Esra. So, Esra was a combining of two groups into one. We, and we did eliminate people, right? Because we didn't just take the equal number, we did eliminate. So, I think now we can, we've slowly, we can reduce that number now down to, to nine. I, I don't see why we're sitting with as many members on that committee compared to others. Because again, people can participate, and they don't necessarily need to be a voting member, but to have, like, nine members plus two alternates, just, eleven members just doesn't make sense to me. So, I would like to see an alignment as far as total members. So, because that's really what Esra was, was built, bringing two together. Made sense, because you had terms that didn't expire, so we had to bring people together, make determination. But now I think we've gotten to a point where we can say, okay, we need to bring in line with the rest of the city. That's just my two cents on that one.
I agree. I mean, and it sounds, it sounds like it might be prudent to make discussions more functional.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard to have a conversation with eleven people.
Yeah, so I, I'm fine with going to nine, okay.
And how, and you said Esra is, has a plan for how they would do that?
I guess I'm not sure if I am clear on that.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe Trish. Say we have a director, yeah.
Director.
We're calling here.
New last name, Olga.
She's driving her right now, so it doesn't matter.
Shred it down.
Um, so, there are four members terming out this, in November. So, this is a perfect opportunity to not displace any current members, um, to reduce down the Board.
Okay, thank you.
So, how do we feel about this, this summation? Um, we, council, you know, is in support to eliminate the alternate position. In terms of Board size, we cap it at nine, and, and, and then in terms of term limits, uh, we have that discussion with the Board separately, and you will come back to us afterwards. Is that fair? Okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. See, all right. We did it. Good job, everybody. All right, uh, well, thank you so much for conducting that research and bringing it back to us.
That sounds good. We will, um, bring back any, um, ordinance changes, an ordinance with any of the changes necessary to you at a regular meeting.
All right. Do you have a closing comment?
I do, yes. And the thing I didn't bring up, because it's been voted down three times, is that you have to be registered to vote to be on one of the Boards, City Boards and Commissions. I understand that for Planning Commission, I understand that for council. But I still have a problem with it, and I know the voters have turned this down three times. But somebody brought up diversity and inclusion, and there are people in the city who are not registered to vote for multiple reasons. And, um, I just, if, if any counselors don't know this, that's a thing. So, it still bugs me that.
And does it have to go to the voters, or can the council make that decision?
It has to.
So, it has to go to.
It's in the Charter.
Yeah.
And that's why you said it got voted down three times.
It got voted down three, and it got worse every time. And I think it's a, it's something that we need to be aware of, that there are people whose voices aren't being heard at that level, because they're not registered to vote. And I don't know that that's something that I can be quiet about, because I don't know that it's recognizing everyone.
Now, there is public comment in each one of these Boards and Commissions, so I would encourage people to sit in the audience, make their public comments, you know, come, you know, attend the meetings. And maybe that's, maybe that's something that people don't realize, because they may think, oh, these are Board and Commission meetings, I can't go. Whereas we invite people all the time, come to council, do public input, but it's rare when you, when public input is open. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it's rare to have public input at one of those Board and Commission meetings. And I think it's good, if we could do that, because I know I'm seeking ways to try to get more diversity in the ways we can. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for that presentation. Um, just to conclude tonight, I did not hear, um, anyone that has any new ideas, but this is the opportunity to bring those up, if any would like to. No? Okay, thank you all. If you do have any new ideas for next month, please give us a heads up. Thank you so much, and you good journey.